It's January 21st. If you would like to join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome. All of you, we each start with a roll call. Harris, will you help us with that?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember welcome is absent, but we do have a call.
Excellent. Thank you. We have an agenda before us. Is there a motion to approve that agenda?
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Mr. Perks, the motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Sellers, seconding. Any discussion? If there is none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? We have an agenda. We have the minutes for January 7th. Any concerns with those minutes? Oh, I add the work session of January 14th. We'll do them both at the same time. Any concerns with either of those minutes? If not, we will acknowledge both and we'll go to the bills. Questions? Comments? Concerns? There are a couple of big bills in there.
What's the Wyoming Department of Transportation?
I asked that too and I had to look it up.
The big one? That's City View Drive, I believe.
That's...
Now, where was it? City View Drive.
Was that like our half?
Because of the cost of the project and being in there, it was a match. And then there's the overmatch. It's a complication.
So...
What do you do if it's going to be expensive?
We emptied out the Urban Systems Fund, I would imagine, on this.
Yeah, it's going to take a while for that box to build back up.
So that is part of that $900 there.
Yeah, they cross-reference and make sure that those are right. That's in supplement to what yearly allowance is.
That ended up being a little bit more than what we had allotted, but we were able to save a good... Not quite. Am I saying that right, Trudy? I think there was a little bit more. But with the Urban Systems funding mechanism through YDOT, we were actually able to save up for that project for...
I think the Urban Systems Fund gave us about $2 million.
Yeah.
By the time it's all designed, construction management will send it to you before, so I have...
Yeah.
I've got a lot of job.
That's what the big one is, is City View Drive.
You need it done, so...
Is there a motion to approve the bills?
So moved.
Mr. Schmidt? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Lynn, seconding. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That takes care of the bills. Revenue and expenditure report for September. Excuse me. Any comments or concerns regarding that report? If there's none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Sellers with the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Lynn, seconding. Any discussion?
We don't have Welling here to jump in so quick, so I guess we gotta get our...
Yeah, you guys are gonna have to be on your game. They need some...
Sorry. It's not fair picking on a guy that ain't here, I know.
There's no further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Let's approve that report. Council comments. Mr. Schmidt, what do you have for us tonight, sir?
Nothing that I can think of right now, sir. Thank you.
No problem. You'll have more opportunities.
Thank you.
Mr. Lynn?
Just tell everybody to stay warm out there. It's that time of year and it's cold and I worry about some of our people that don't have adequate heat or adequate, you know, shelter. So please help those out if you can. It's cold out there.
Yes. Mr. Perks?
Yeah, I brought my dogs in last night. I should've given them some gas acts. I didn't sleep very well. That was bad news. But to put a bug in your ear, Tim Lynch was on our Urban Systems and he is no longer on the council. To put that bug in your ear before March on our next meeting...
I appreciate that. Good information. Thank you. Mr. Sellers?
So, I just... Couple of comments. Be mindful of your family and be appreciative of them. Life can change in a hurry. My wife went to bed Sunday, Saturday night, woke up Sunday very sick and ended up a week in the hospital at the U. Four days in ICU with lots of things going on. This morning she said, you know, only 36% of the people who have what I had died or survived. So it kinda hits home when you're watching and you're watching the monitors and you know what the monitors mean. So just hold tight to your people. She's fine. Anybody watching that out there in TV land? Appreciate all the support from neighbors and friends that we received over the last week. So I won't be attending while I'm with you this because I need to be a little closer than six hours away, so...
Yes, you do. Sorry to hear that. Hope she heals up fast. Sorry to hear that.
Thank you, everybody.
Mr. Higginson?
I don't give hugs. I did not know that. Your wife is an amazing human being and I wish her the best.
She's doing well.
And I don't give hugs, by the way. It's rare and...
She's doing very well.
Just back on track, echo what Jesse said. It's really cold outside. Keep, you know, it's super cold and bring the dogs in. There, it's not survivable weather unless you have a malleum mute or a pyrenees or like such. So bring them inside and as always, support our troops and go 101st. So there you have it.
Thank you. Well, I have nothing to add. I'll just say amen to the things that were said and I hope your wife, give your wife our best and hope that she heals up quickly, completely. And so with that, we will move on. We do have a couple of... We're starting the time of year when we have some board appointments. We have two to consider tonight and I'd like to bring forth the names of Lisa Cox and Summer Ben to both be reappointed to the Evanston Tree Board for a three-year term to end January of 2028, if someone would like to make a motion to that effect.
I'll make that motion, Your Honor, and I appreciate them serving.
Absolutely. Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it, Your Honor.
Mr. Schmidt with a second. Any discussion? If there's none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Thank you. We appreciate their service, continued service there on that tree board. Our next item is a public hearing to solicit some comments regarding a grant. I suspect you'll be our hearing officer, Mr. Harris?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a public hearing to solicit public comment regarding the proposed Business Ready Community Planning Grant, Wyoming Business Council, for grant funds to create a detailed, comprehensive economic development master plan for the city of Evanston. I will note that this is related to Resolution 25-07 later on the agenda. So the hearing is a non-contested case hearing. Anyone wishing to address any comments to the council would just need to approach podium, state your name, and present your...
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Mika Madrid and I'm the grant writer for the city of Evanston. So as Mr. Harris alluded to, we are respectfully requesting your approval tonight to apply for funds from the Wyoming Business Council for a 2050 Comprehensive Economic Development Master Plan. The nature of this project is to create a broad, detailed, and actionable blueprint encompassing numerous aspects of the entire community, such as demographics, land and property uses, public infrastructure and utilities, transportation, parks and rec, public safety, housing, workforce, business development, and more. The planning process will entail extensive public outreach, data collection, as well as an exhaustive review of past and current municipal plans and studies. The project will benefit the public by providing a clear framework for sustainable and steady development and community well-being for the next 25 years. More specifically, it will help guide our future strategies, policies, and fiscal decisions, as well as identify both short and long-term projects necessary for economic growth and success. The economic outcomes we desire from this project involve, but are not limited to, the improvement of public infrastructure, attraction of new businesses and investments, expansion of existing industries, advancement of workforce training and higher education, expansion of affordable housing, and the enhancement of the overall quality of life. The grant amount that we are requesting from the Business Council is $100,000. We do have to match this 25%, and we are going to actually overmatch that with $50,000 from YDOT that you've already approved, and then the city will match with $37,500. Any cost overruns will be the responsibility of the city. So the due date for this application is February 1st, and we should know about approval from the Business Council in April or May, and then the funding should be available by June. So it's pretty straightforward. Do you have any questions?
So there is competition for this money. It's just not a cut-and-dry thing. There's other competition for those funds?
Yes. Yeah. It's a competitive grant application, yes.
But we got Kylie gonna help us out, right?
Yes.
Putting pressure on her.
She has the application draft as we speak.
Excellent.
Questions? Is there anyone else present who wishes to make public?
Mika, before you, is this gonna be an update to the last master plan that we put together?
Yes, and we're gonna use other plans that we have put together to help update this one, so, yeah.
And who's doing the... Who's doing the study? Is that known yet, or...
No. That's what the money's for.
And then you're gonna bid it out?
Hire a firm, yeah. Or could be more than one firm, depending on the situation, so...
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Councilor Lynn, this is 2050.
Okay.
A quick question, not being familiar with some of the funding that's been gotten before. Does these funds mean to any programs that we have presently?
I'm not sure I understand.
The funding that we're getting or that we're asking for at $100,000 or whatever, is it earmarked for certain projects or plans? I'm not familiar with the other parts of the program.
So there are many grant programs through the Wyoming Business Council, and this is just one of them. This is specific for an economic development plan. And we can apply... That's the maximum amount that we can apply for. Other plans aren't the same way, so... And you can apply for that amount because it usually takes more than that amount to get a project like this done. I mean, there's going to be a series of public hearings, there's going to be surveys, all kinds of outreach. Does that answer your question? Okay.
This isn't something that we're not budgeting for. My predecessor, let's say several years ago, had put in the budget to try and get this thing going. Even on this last budget approval, $200,000 was put into our budget with the assumption we would get $150,000 or $50,000 from YDOT, leaving the city to cover $150. This 100 will just only help us make the mission possible. So we've already started our city budget process and it's already in there, and just hopefully we can get more.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I don't have... Thank you, Mika.
Mr. Mayor, Council, I just want to voice my support for an economic development master plan. My name's Alex Rossi. We own two buildings on Main Street and we would love to see more people encouraged to come downtown on a regular basis. I think the Chamber and Mika's organization, Downtown Alliance, do a fantastic job of creating events, but as you probably are well aware, it's fairly sparse down there, particularly after about 4:00 in the afternoon. So I encourage that master plan to include a revitalization plan for downtown, for getting people down there, having people work down there, visit businesses, live down there. I mean, to create a vital downtown. I would like to be... I would like to participate in that master plan, if there's some way that I can do that as a business owner, be part of the development of that, the growth of that. I just, I think it's a fantastic idea. I did have a question, if I could. What is the timeframe for the development of that master plan? When do you expect to have it finalized and ready to present?
Well, it depends on if we get the funding.
Sure.
And we won't know that until about June timeframe, and then we'll go out to bid, and then we'll start the project.
How long do you expect, provided you get the funding and you get it in that timeframe?
By spring, I think, June.
Okay. Cool. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Anyone else wish to present any comments on the plan application? There being none, the hearing on this matter will be closed.
Thank you. We'll go on to our consent agenda. We've got one item there. It's a car show. Mr. Ben Reynolds is requesting that. With that being that the car show, this is a car show that we're familiar with, we're not necessarily familiar with Mr. Reynolds being associated with this car show, but I think it's the same thing, is it not, Ben? Come tell us what you've got going, what you've... You and Johnny still friends?
Yes, we're friends. He's gonna be helping along the way for this first year. He said that it was either going to end or I could take it over, so I decided to give it a shot because it does bring a lot of revenue to the local businesses, sells out hotels and that sort of thing. And I just enjoy car shows, so...
Excellent. Glad to see you do it, and I think it's great to keep it going.
Yeah, but you're a part of it, too. You drive around.
Appreciate that.
I like your car.
Any... Oh, thanks. Any questions for Mr. Reynolds? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve our consent agenda.
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Mr. Perks, the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Sellers, seconding. I heard Mike first, is that okay, Ms. Eggman?
Yep.
As long as one of you do, I guess it's okay.
Yep.
Any discussion? If there is none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed?
Thank you.
There you go, sir. Thank you. Appreciate you doing that. We have no unfinished business, so we'll go on to new business and we'll... Our first item there is a motion to accept financial disclosure statements from the Mayor, City Council, City Clerk, and City Treasurer. Ms. Lynn?
This is just an annual motion that we have to do. It's required by state statute that the Mayor, Council, myself, and the City Clerk disclose where they bank as opposed to what the city banks. So if you have accounts at Wells Fargo, as does the city, then we... You have to mark it on there. So it's just one of those conflict resolution disclosures and...
Excellent. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve these statements?
So moved.
Mr. Schmidt? The motion, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Lynn, seconding. I'll catch you before the meeting's over.
Don't worry about it.
Any discussion? If there's none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's approved. Thank you. Our next item is a motion to accept the substantial completion of the Roundhouse Section 4. Rocco?
Mayor, Members of the Council, Rocco O'Neil, City of Evanston Community Development Department. We did receive the certificate of substantial completion from the architect, and so we can begin that 41-day advertising period that statute requires before we issue that final payment. The first advertisement will be next Wednesday, and so final payment, should you approve this, or should you approve it, will be the 11th of March.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve this substantial completion?
I'll make that motion.
Lynn? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Gave you a chance, Mr. Lynn.
I know.
I was reading. No problem. We have a motion, there's a second, is there any discussion?
These funds aren't gonna go above... There's no change orders, there's nothing. We've already set this money aside, yes?
Correct.
Thank you for putting that report together and sending it out, too.
You bet.
Appreciate that.
I'm always happy to answer questions.
So it's gonna come out of the $4,644,011.43?
If that is the contracted amount after change orders, then yes.
Yeah, it's the paper that you gave me? Just checking.
I'm hoping, praying, there might be a deduction in there.
Yeah, it'll be good.
We're still working on it.
Any further discussion?
I'd just like to thank Rocco for the time that you spent explaining some of the expenditures to me and bringing to light some of the questions that I had, so thank you for that.
You're welcome. I welcome criticism.
Just if we're waiting on Tanner, tell him to, you know, under-promise, over-deliver, which means we get, you know, money back or discount, right?
Yeah, yeah. I'm working on it. Tanner's, you know, Tanner Development did a great job for us. It's a... I mean, it's an A-plus project. They did really a top-notch job, and part of being a top-notch contractor is you don't hand money out. So he's pretty good at negotiating.
Do we have an idea when that's gonna... When Shades is gonna move in and be operational?
We have an idea of when they're gonna start moving equipment in, and that will be in the next couple of weeks, so... We're going to initiate the term of the lease agreement February 1, and that'll begin the 12 months, and then we'll turn the facility over to them so they can start their improvements over there.
And do you recall, I have it on in my paperwork at home, but do you recall, it's a question I get asked a lot, so it would be easier to have it on the record, on tape. What is the lease agreement? And... Because it was a staggered, correct?
Yeah, it's a 10-year lease agreement and it's staggered, and so that payment goes from zero up to $10,000 a month. It's a total over the 10-year period of $900,000 in total lease payments.
More importantly, when's the tap house part of that gonna be open?
I bug Trent about this weekly, bi-weekly, every week, and, you know, like any project, they're optimistic that they'll be open by spring.
Cool.
If we gave you a date, I'd be fibbing to you, so we're working for spring.
Well, they were hoping to throw a party about a year and a half ago, too.
Yeah.
I finally got to try one of their beers, though, so that was nice. I think it was Pina Colada Sour.
They make good stuff, man.
They make some interesting stuff.
There's no further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That's proof. Thank you, Rocco. Our next item is Ordinance 2501. Mr. Harris, will you read that title for us, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the Council, Ordinance 2501 is sponsored by Councilors Welling and Perks. It is an ordinance approving and authorizing a zone change for property in the city of Evanston from public zone to highway business established zone as requested by AGN LLC, DBA Aspen Grove Nursery of the land more particularly described herein. This matter is on...
Thank you. Mr. Jacobson?
Hey, Mayor and Council. I believe you're aware of where this property is located. It's the Old Sunset RV Park, addressed 196 Bear River Drive, shown on the map. The Unica County Fairgrounds, Hamlin Park are located just to the west of there. They are public land uses, zone public. You have some residential housing just located to the east and some commercial land uses along Bear River Drive further to the east. Across the street, it is... There's also several commercial land uses as well. Zoning for the property east of 196 Bear River Drive is highway business established, as well as highway business established zoning located across Bear River Drive to the south. So that's the project location. So a little bit of history, back in 2003, late 2003, early 2004, prior to that, the city had purchased the property there and had rezoned the property from highway business established to a public zoning designation. The purpose was... The reason behind that was we were looking at expansion of the public use, the fairgrounds used to the east. There were a couple of plans that were done, conceptual plans, that one would take in the Mobile Home Park to the north, and there was a planned, a lesser grand plan that would extend the fairgrounds east, which would include subject property. There's been multiple uses proposed over the years since the last zone change in 2003. We've looked at multiple uses for the property, several ideas. Currently, the property is used for parking for the fairgrounds. The city also uses the property for snow removal. I believe the city has made arrangements for relocating the snow removal to another location, but I believe also that currently, I believe right now, it's... There's a section of the site that may be used for... Being used for snow storage. So the applicant, so AGN LLC, AGN standing for Aspen Grove Nursery, they've submitted an application to change the zoning from public back to a highway business established land use, and the reason being, the Aspen Grove Nursery has been permitted and is a retail land use in the public zoning district. A retail land use is not a listed land use and is deemed to be prohibited in the zone. So that's the purpose for rezoning the property back to a highway business established zoning district that would permit the proposed land use. So I've provided a little bit of detail, so you can see the master plan shows the fairgrounds and that expansion of that, shown in blue to the north, and then also extending over to include subject property. So the current master plan does show current land uses, public, with the zone change... So, the current master plan does show current land uses, public, with the zone change. Upon third reading, if approved, we'll have a resolution on the agenda to amend the master plan to, from a public land use to highway business land use. So, the Evanston Comprehensive Plan notes that the fairgrounds will expand north to absorb Fair Meadows Mobile Home Park and east to the former Sunset RV Park. The plan continues to note that Hamlin Park will remain as a city park. The new facilities include an enclosed arena, convention center, and service or structured The proposed zone changes, as I mentioned, inconsistent with the Evanston Comprehensive Plan as it currently shows, and again, the applicant will ask to amend that upon third reading. The Planning and Zoning Commission has held a public hearing on January 6 and has reviewed the zone change proposal. There was a positive recommendation unanimous from the Planning Commission. There was one person who spoke in opposition to the request and expressed concerns with a shortage of parking for the events held at the fairgrounds and would like to still continue to use the property for parking. Do you have any questions regarding?
Any questions for Mr. Jacobson?
I have a question, and you may have addressed it, but I couldn't hear some of the comments that you made. On the, there was some discussion earlier, a couple of months ago, I believe, about the buildings that are on the property, and something historical with those is that, are they staying on the property?
They are, it is city property, so anything that's done with the buildings on the property would need to have the approval of the City Council.
So, did I hear you said that they were gonna utilize those for storage at this time?
I believe at the Planning Commission meeting, I don't think he had any plans for use of the buildings. Everything was, his operation is exterior of the building.
I think when Conrad commented when he was here last was, if he has the ability to do something with those buildings and use the structures and keep their historic significance, he was gonna do everything he could if it came to that point, but I don't think he has any plans right now. But I know there are people that are worried about the historic preservation of that area. Conrad, at least in his comments when he was here before, did say he would do what he could to keep the historic preservation of those buildings.
So, prior to him or the company or the business doing any changes to the buildings because their historical value, that won't be done unless we approve that, correct?
Well, any alteration to the, not necessarily given the historical value, any alteration to the property in and of itself would have to be approved by this body. We own the property, the city owns the property. As far as the buildings themselves, certainly they have historical, there's a historical element there. I think there has been historically some, and Mr. Harris, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think there has been some feeling that there is some historical protection for those buildings, and I do not believe that's the case. But any alteration of the building or any alteration for the property itself, above and beyond what's included in the lease, would have to be approved by this body.
Thank you.
Is that, please?
Mayor, Councilor Schmidt, that is correct. The lease did address that specific issue about the buildings. I believe that the proper designation was an area of local historic significance. There are no protections with that designation to answer Councilor Lynn's specific question, but the lease was drawn in, with the, with those buildings in mind, and the mayor is correct. Any modification, alteration, including demolition removal, requires the council's approval, and the lease specifically provided that if those buildings were deemed to be dangerous and abandoned under the International Building Code, they could be removed, because that's a designation made ironically by the city and its building official, and there's obligations for removal of dangerous and abandoned buildings. But again, that would come before the council, before that word.
Thank you.
But at the same time, the end of this lease gives an option for purchase, correct?
That is correct.
So, and at that point, if he purchased the property, it would be up to him to do what he saw fit with those buildings?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yeah, if he were to enact that portion of it, yes. Yeah.
My opinion is, the city owns so much land, it's sure nice to be able to turn some of it over to the private sector that we're gonna get money back on. That property, we've had a lot of ideas on, but it's been sitting down there doing nothing but collecting trash and snow and, for years, so I'm all for what we're doing here. If we kept that property and tried to develop it into an extension of the park or parking lot, that's a lot of money the city's gonna have to invest, maintain for years to come, and I'd just as soon have that income by first leasing it out and then later on, hopefully selling it, but that's where I stand.
And I'll just add to that before we go to a vote. I do know that this did pose or has posed a little bit of a concern. You mentioned there was some opposition at the meeting, and I'm aware of that, and I respect that. I do know that this will put a little bit of an issue before the county to accommodate some parking what they need, more relative to the fair than anything else, and it's certainly not our design or purpose to make the county's life more difficult or their or the fair board's life more difficult with regard to parking, but this is an opportunity, I think, for the city that we just need to consider at this time. It generates commerce, it generates jobs, it generates all kinds of things, not that the fair doesn't, because it does, but I think this is a better use of the property, and I'm hoping that the county can find ways to accommodate what they need to, and we certainly didn't do this with the purpose of making their purposes more difficult for them. That was not our design.
When we were looking at the 2030 plan years ago, if you remember that?
Yes.
We were focused on the, on Bear River Drive and that east end, and, you know, I think it's gonna be a big step in revitalizing that side of town. It gives people a reason to go down there other than to get some Mexican food, so, and go to the fair, and I think it's just gonna beautify it a lot, because nurseries can be really nice businesses, so I think it's a good use.
We've got, this is co-sponsored, I guess, right?
Yes.
So, we need a motion to approve ordinance 2501 on first reading.
I'll make that motion.
See, I told you I'd get to you, hey. Mr. Harris, make the motion, is there a second? Mr. Sellers, seconding. And there wasn't even a second, you got to make the motion, so. Excellent.
Any discussion on the motion? If there is none, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just, I think it's gonna be a good fit.
There's no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, are there any opposed? That is approved on first reading, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question before we move on? Where's 2502? From 2501, 2503?
Good question.
This is a resolution, that's an ordinance, that was ordinance 2501.
Oh, okay, I see, I see that now, yeah. I was just looking at the number.
It'll all become clear later on, as you go down the road. Resolution 2503, Mr. Harris, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council. Resolution 2503 is a resolution authorizing the City of Evanston, Wyoming to enter into a SCADA service agreement renewal in 2025 with Wetco to provide maintenance services for the SCADA system at and in the City of Evanston wastewater and water treatment plants.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Robinson.
Right off before we start, I noticed that on the top, we've got 2025, and down in the middle, it's 2023. We'll get you the corrected form to sign. I think we can still move ahead, though. This is our annual agreement with Wetco, the company who does our service agreement, the service on the SCADA systems, both clients.
Just to renew all of that contract?
Just to re, annual renewal.
Sounds good.
How was the money, and was it more or less?
Money's the same so far.
That's pretty good with the inflation.
Do you have questions, Mr. Sellers?
Just the same one. I was just wondering if they increased the fees, so.
Is there introduction on this resolution?
I'll introduce it with a motion to pass.
Mr. Perks with a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Schmidt with a second. Any discussion?
I'm guessing you're happy with their service?
Yeah, they're great. Even if we have emergency where they need to come up, help us with something, they're good, so. A lot of technical stuff in that SCADA system that they handle very well.
There's no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, are there any opposed? That is approved, thank you. Can we do resolution 04 and 05 together, they're very similar, or do we need to do them separately?
For discussion?
Yeah, for discussion purposes?
Yes.
So if you'll take us through 04 and 05 both.
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council. Resolution 2504 is a resolution, the City of Evanston, Wyoming, establishing a no parking zone for a portion of Cheyenne Drive in the Unica Meadows Elementary School area as designated and set forth in the attached map. Resolution 2505 is a resolution of the City of Evanston, Wyoming, establishing a no parking zone for a portion of Cheyenne Drive in the Unica Meadows area as designated and set forth in the attached map.
Mr. Robinson again, thank you, sir.
The first one has to do with the street right in front of Unica Meadows Elementary. That no parking zone is somewhat already established. The school district put up signs there a few years ago, and without a resolution behind it, those signs were not enforceable, so that's basically cleaning that up, so it becomes an enforceable no parking zone. It's needed for school traffic and parent traffic and safety and all kinds of things there. That's that one. And then the other one is Cheyenne Drive, both sides, from Arapahoe to about the car wash, which is about 540 Cheyenne Drive. That, I'm asking for that closure because of continual daily issues with parking and snow removal and trash collection and student, kids' safety on the sidewalks and things. Went through all this in our work session last week, so, no changes to that, other than we fought the same issue every day for the last week since the work session, so. We did reach out to the two individual homes on the south side, and both of those residents were extremely happy to have a closure in front of their homes.
I figured they might be.
And you also indicated at our work session, just for everyone's information, that the owner, the manager of the apartments themselves is very much supportive of this.
Very much on board, and I'm told that they've reached out to their residents to tell them this is coming, so I can't follow up with each resident, but they've, they've...
There's less cars the last few days as I drive by there.
Yes.
So, people are already starting to be aware, so they're getting the idea.
It will take some time to get some signs in to put up there, but we're working on that.
Sounds good. I'll, is there introduction on, we'll do them separately, 2504?
I'll introduce with a motion to pass.
Mr. Lynn with a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Sellers, seconding. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, are there any opposed? That's approved, and I'll entertain a, is there introduction on 2505?
I'll introduce with a motion to pass.
Sellers with a motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Lynn, seconding.
Must be in you guys' area.
Yeah, it's in our area, that's why I was thinking.
I think this'll be good, especially for Unica Meadows and the kids, and just the whole thing, it'll help.
I think it's gonna make the place look better, 'cause it's been getting kinda, when you can't empty the trash and it's piling up, it makes the whole neighborhood look kinda, it's a gateway, and it makes the whole place look bad.
Thank you for reaching out to those two residents, too. I figured they'd be in favor of it, but...
They were, yes.
I think it was the right thing to do.
There's no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, are there any opposed? That's approved, thank you. Resolution 2506, Mr. Harris, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 2506, a resolution, the governing body of the City of Evanston, Wyoming officially designated, designating Unica Bank, State Bank, First Bank Evanston, and BMO as a depository for monies of the city.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Lynn.
Again, this is just a yearly resolution we do to designate our depository banks. It's required by state statute to do this. Normally, it never changes, but this year, we did take off Wells Fargo, because we have not been using them. I think we added State Bank last year, but we pretty much try to use every bank.
Sounds good. Is there an introduction on this resolution?
I'll introduce it with a motion to pass.
Mr. Perks with a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Schmidt, seconding. Any discussion?
I think Wells Fargo will be just fine.
Yeah.
They haven't asked any questions in the last years that we've been...
And will save money.
Yes.
We will save money.
The city saves money.
I like using our smaller, local, more affiliated locally.
Yes.
Further discussion? If there's none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, are there any opposed?
Judy? Why are you here?
Resolution 2507, Mr. Harris, you read that title for us, please.
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council. Resolution 2507 is a resolution, the City of Evanston, Wyoming, supporting and authorizing an application to obtain planning grant funds from the Wyoming Business Council Business Ready Community Planning Grant Program for the Evanston 2050 Comprehensive Economic Development Master Plan.
Thank you. This is relative to the public hearing we held earlier in the meeting? I'll just, is there introduction on this resolution?
I'll introduce with a motion to pass.
I'll second it, Your Honor.
Perks, seconding? Discussion?
This is something I've wanted to have done for a long time, and we'll have public meetings, so I hope we get this money. We had, and I remember sitting, I wasn't on the council, but I remember sitting in two of the three meetings in this hall when we did the 2010 plan, that's been a while ago, so I think it's overdue. I think we need to do this.
Thank Mika for all her hard work. I don't know if she gets enough credit for all the grant writing.
Oh, I could be.
She does a phenomenal job. That's not easy, so thank her for everything she does.
Absolutely.
Further discussion? If there is none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, are there any opposed? That's approved as well, thank you. Go on to departments. Mr. Nielsen, we have anything for us tonight, sir? Mr. Lynn? Mr. Robinson? Larson? Mr. O'Neil?
I just wanna say, I appreciated the time of Councilman Schmidt. He's always happy to answer questions, so if any of the council wants to come in and chat with me, please do. Councilman Lynn said, Mika is amazing, she spends a lot of time, and she's maybe the most dominant grant writer in the state, so it's thankful for her.
Excellent, thank you. Mr. Grohl, you're here with the police department tonight, you have anything for us, sir?
No, Your Honor.
Thank you. Mr. Harris?
No, Your Honor.
Mr. Harris?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Nothing? Public participation, is there anyone here from the public who would like to address the council for any reason? Yes, sir?
Jared Howton, 234 Medicine Butte, Unit B. First of all, I'd like to start off with something positive. I think I've spoken to five of the seven of you that are on the council. I really appreciate y'all speaking with me and responding to my emails, calling me, returning my calls. That honestly does mean a lot, and I will say that out of everybody I've had conversations with at the local level, the county, the school board, and the city... the county, the school board, and the city, when I ask questions, I do get least resistance from the city. I'll tell you one thing that absolutely frustrates the hell out of me, and that's when I ask a simple question, I get accused of not caring about the children, not wanting to fund the emergency services, not wanting to pay teachers. Very frustrating for me, but I do appreciate the responses that I've gotten from the City Council. And I'm actually planning on asking a lot more questions, especially with Shades Brewery going in at the Roundhouse, because I'm a fiscal conservative, and a little while back ago, there's a gentleman by the name of Chris Hopkins that was collecting signatures over at the county courthouse. It, they weren't happy with him being there because of the content of the resolution, so I'm paying a little bit more attention to how money is being spent at the local level. And I'm really big with government transparency. With public money, you should be able to show the public how you're spending that money. And I'm not going to, you know, I understand that I'm one person in a town of 12,000 plus people, and not everybody's going to see government, local government, the same way I do. But transparency is like the first step and the biggest part of that. So, I plan on being a little bit more involved and asking a lot more questions on that. I do want to thank you, Mr. O'Neill. For some reason, I did not receive your email on the 13th, but I did receive your last one, and I am going to be going through that. It's a little bit, he says it was $900,000 over 10 years from, from, for the Shades Brewery folks to go in there?
Roughly, I have to go through the list.
Okay. And I'll go through, I'll go through this, what you sent me before I get into too many questions, but like I says, I've spoken to Councilwoman Hagman, Sellers, Welling, I've spoken to you, Mayor Williams, Mr. Perkins. Haven't had the opportunity to speak to you or Mr. Lynn or you, Mr. Schmidt yet, but I'm pretty sure that that'll be coming down the road. But I just, I do want to say thank you to those, to those who have responded to me and very respectfully to you, so that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Please.
Hi, I'm Mareka Rossi, and I just wondered if you could update me on what's going on with the state hospital land? And I know that there was a resolution about that a while back, and I just wondered where we are.
Well, I'll try to answer that. There, there has been very little, in fact, no discussion that I'm aware of in the last two or three months, maybe even a little bit longer than that. The, the subject truly is in the hands of the state. It's, it's pretty much up to them and the five, what do they call that board? I'm drawing a blank, the Lands and Investment Board, is that what that is? Which is made up of the five highest elected officials in the state. And decision for the state hospital is in their, in their realm of discussion or their authority. But there has been no, no discussions or talks that the city has been involved in for the last several months.
So, you've already appealed to the state, and they know that we want that land? Is that how that, is that how it's gone?
No, no, we've not appealed to them. It's their decision. They own it.
But they know that, that Evanston is interested in it?
Well, they, they got the resolution.
Okay.
That was passed, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, it's just a wait and see and?
It's all in their hands right now. I anticipate that as they, as they move forward, when that is, we will, we will be included in some of those discussions, but ultimately, it's their decision.
Okay. I can add a little bit more. So, there was an amendment passed by the House for a continuation of one year up to March, and it's been a ping pong between the city and the state because the state owned, but the city and, so it was in, it's in limbo and all that. John Conrad actually got that passed to delay the demolition for one year. So, the demolition of this Wyoming State Hospital is still in the hands of the state, and our stay of execution, if you will, is up in March. And then they can do, they can begin the demo process. They had allotted money and funds for it last year. There's been some changes at the Capitol. So, we'll see how, you know, that goes. Also, there was some talks and negotiations for one of the schools that actually approached us at one point that to, it was a school that remediates asbestos and mold, and their, their goal was to get, and it's funded by the tool companies, not the city or the state, so it's funded by Milwaukee or DeWalt. Those are the only tool companies that are coming to mind, but it could be somebody different. And so, they educate the, the students on how, on remediation and rebuild. As far as repurposing it, selling it, doing any of that, that is gone, it's nowhere. The only thing that is in writing and is in a hard cold fact is demolition.
I got, I got a, so Senator Schuler came to Rotary Club about a month ago, and she, she brought up and talked about the state hospital. Nobody asked her about it, she brought it up. And she has been involved in talks with the school that Councilman Hagman's talking about. And she has expressed, she expressed some really support for that possibility of happening to use, use the state hospital, at least for some of the buildings, as a trade school to teach, teach those. And it's a school that has done it in other places and restored buildings, and they've been turned around and used as office buildings and professional buildings, lawyers, doctors, accountants, whatever, what have you. And so, so again, that's back in the state's hands, but Senator Schuler has at least brought up to the Rotary Club that, that it's intriguing to her and she wants to pursue that somewhat. So, I don't know what that'll bring and where that will go.
Okay.
Sir, too, just to clarify, the state received the resolution, but they also received a letter from you right after that resolution that maybe everybody should know about as well.
Thank you, everybody does.
I don't.
There was a resolution that was passed six to one, and that resolution was sent to the state. But then shortly after that resolution, the mayor also sent a letter to the state in opposition of that resolution.
I was not in favor of the resolution. The resolution passed, they got a copy of it.
Right. Okay. Two resolutions. Okay. Thank you.
Does that answer your questions?
It does. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
There was never a resolution passed.
There's never such a resolution.
We, we.
It was, it was a discussion that we were discussing about making an RFP, but it died in work session because we didn't have the support to, we had the votes for the resolutions, but we didn't have the support to have the RFP. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the council for any reason tonight? If there's not, we will adjourn.